This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Thank you for going through your patience. It is now 6:40 PM on Thursday, October 3rd, 2024, and I call this public hearing to order here at the Social Scene in Victoria Beach. Good evening, and thank you all for attending, and thank you all on screen for attending. I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, the Cree, Anasanaq New Nations, Dakota Assiniboine and Dene people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We respect the treaties that were made on these territories. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we dedicate ourselves to move forward in partnership with Indigenous and Métis communities in a spirit of reconciliation and collaboration. Introductions around the table. I'll start on my far left.
Ian Chancy.
Steve Axonin.
Law attorney.
Penny McMorris, Mayor.
Howard Kupir, Counselor.
And I'm Counselor Gray.
And on the far, on your far right, my far right.
Andre Prezent from Landmark Planning.
Ellen Enz with the Province. Thank you very much. All right, just some, some information for those of you here. I will be chairing tonight's public hearing. Counsel is here to listen to your comments. We are not here to get into a debate on issues. We are here to hopefully to provide some clarification on, on concerns and queries. And I will be deferring to Andre and Ellen probably more often than not. They are the professionals. If we don't have an answer for you, we are recording the proceedings, and we will be able to find those answers for you, we hope. So tonight's meeting is to hear presentations from the public on our zoning bylaw, which has been a very long, lengthy, painful, seven-year journey so far. Oh, did I say that out loud? I did. Our development plan was passed in 2017, and work began very soon after on our zoning bylaw. Our zoning bylaw received first reading by counsel on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, at a regular meeting of counsel. Prior to passing first reading of this bylaw, our planner met with counsel, our CAO, our building inspector, and our planner had many emails, meetings, and conversations with special interest groups and residents. We held two public open houses here at the Social Scene, where the planners were here to discuss any concerns and talk about the bylaw with residents. And consultations with this, these groups, we hope, help us arrive at the document we have in front of us, and that will allow us to move forward with this document. After first reading on August 20th, we advertised the public hearing for the Planning Act, Section 45. We advertised on the Winnipeg Free Press on August 27th and September 24th. We posted the notice on our website in our admin office in Winnipeg and at locations around the RM. We sent a connect message out on September 26th, via text, email, and voice to residents who are signed up for connect. The zoning bylaw has been reviewed by government departments and agencies, and comments have been received from Manitoba Agriculture, Bell &amp; DS, Manitoba Hydro, Municipal and Northern Relations, Environment, Climate and Parks, Drainage and Water Licensing Branch, Economic Development Investment Trade and Natural Resources Mines Branch, and Manitoba Sport, Culture, Heritage, and Tourism Historic Resources Branch. This is a public hearing. You do not have to be a property owner to speak. Anyone can speak to this bylaw. However, if you are wanting to make an objection, you must be a voter on the current voters list for the RM of Victoria Beach. So, a little bit of housekeeping, please. All delegations will have 10 minutes, or less. We will have 10 minutes. And I thank everyone for signing in. I will go through the list. I will start with our virtual presentations, and then I will go through the list. For me, I'll start with one in-person presentation. And if you wish to speak, you will have an opportunity. All comments must be directed through myself. And if I can, if counsel has agreement, I can decline to hear further presentations if we feel that topic has been covered, asked and answered, if you will. Also, if someone is conducting themselves in a disorderly or improper manner, you will be asked to leave. But I'm not anticipating that. And as I mentioned, Andre, Andre will be speaking to a few concerns in a few minutes. But I have nothing really further to add other than I would like to go into our agenda and enter into Committee of the Whole, which is required for this meeting. And my resolution says, be it resolved, the Council of the Royal Municipality of Victoria Beach says as Committee of the Whole with Mayor McMorris's chair to receive representations from any persons who wish to make them in respect to the following matter: The Rural Municipality of Victoria Beach zoning bylaw 1651, being the bylaw to regulate and control the use and development of land and buildings within the municipal limits of the RM of Victoria Beach. May I have a mover, gentlemen? Thank you, Ian. Second, Steve. May I open the discussion? Okay. Take about all those in favor of opening this committee? Thank you. Carrie. Sorry, this is a bit of a new procedure for me, so I might bumble a bit. All right. Before we go into our delegations, the first one is Sean Taylor. Before we go into that, I would like to ask Andre, our planner, to address some concerns and, and issues.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. I do have a presentation prepared. I don't know if it can be put up on the screen so everyone can see it as well. Just for background, my name is Andre Prezent. I'm a planner with Landmark Planning and Design. I've been doing this for about 15 years. And interestingly enough, my career actually started working as a provincial planner in this area. Worked, worked at Ellen's office. She's the regional manager of the Bosager Community Planning Office. That's where I cut my teeth as a planner for the first time. And also, interestingly enough, that was at the time when this community experienced what has been referred to as a leather bomb. I was on site the day after. We did a bunch of site visits around here. Very familiar with the, the local context. And over the years, I've tried my best to keep up in terms of what, what's been happening here. And have numerous, very fond memories of joining friends at cottages here and, and having a great time. So, personal life and professional life has kind of, they've kind of come together here. But I do have a presentation. I'll hop into it. It's more so providing background about what the, what a zoning bylaw is, how a zoning bylaw is actually put together, what informs a zoning bylaw, some of our public and stakeholder engagements, and a brief overview of some of the comments received. So that's my outline for tonight. I just want to thank everyone that's here. As Mayor McMorris mentioned, we've been working on this for about 14 months. Or my, my firm has been working on this for about 14 months. It's been a lot longer for counsel. I'm going to go through kind of all the steps that have been, been gone through to get to where we are today. Yeah, thanks to everyone here that's been participating in the process. It's super helpful for, for us to put together a bylaw that's meaningful for a community. Public feedback is very important. I'll, I'll go through the public engagement that we've gone through. But I think everyone here that's been involved in the process deserves a, a big thank you because it makes, makes my job a heck of a lot easier in terms of putting together, or assisting counsel put together a bylaw that, that works for the community. The one thing I'll also point out is that the RM of Victoria Beach is the only municipality in Manitoba right now that does not have a zoning bylaw. This is a unique community in, in many different ways. But from a planning perspective, it's the last, last municipality that does not have a zoning bylaw. So it's kind of special to be at this hearing. We're all potentially witnessing history as, as this process plays out. You're, you're privy to see the first zoning bylaw for, for Victoria Beach maybe in the future. But with that, we'll get into some project background. So basically, since 1969, land use planning and regulation have been informed by the Victoria Beach Planning Scheme, which is still to be used today to provide zoning-related regulation in the rural municipality of Victoria Beach. The modern planning framework, and I'm going to go over some slides about how that works, used in Manitoba requires a municipality to have both a development plan and a zoning bylaw. So the RM of Victoria Beach formally adopted a development plan in 2017, as mentioned by Mayor McMorris, which replaced the planning policy from the Victoria Beach Planning Scheme. So, a planning policy of more written statements. Planning regulation is more yes, no, and then numbers associated with it. So it kind of contained both. Now, the policy section has been delegated to the development plan. The planning scheme that remains is the regulatory set book, permitted conditional uses, setbacks, et cetera. So for planning policy and regulation to align as per the planning framework used in Manitoba, Victoria Beach basically has to adopt a zoning bylaw. It makes a heck of a lot easier to have modern regulation to assess development applications as they come in. So in the summer of 2023, the RM of Victoria Beach, with the assistance of Landmark Planning and Design, re-initiated the process of crafting a zoning bylaw. In addition to creating a modern zoning bylaw that conforms to the RM, RM's development plan, this review process is also an opportunity to modernize the Victoria Beach zoning bylaw by updating definitions and zones, reassessing dimensional standards, discussing changes to permitted and conditional uses, and updating the document format. Zoning bylaws don't really read as a book. They contain a bunch of different regulation, and you kind of have to skip around them depending on what you're doing. It can be a really interesting document to go through. That's basically a zoning bylaw there. It's not a novel where you read from, from front, front to back, and it all should make sense. So I've been mentioning this management of planning framework. So zoning bylaw is part of that overall planning framework that's used here in Manitoba. And we often think of it as a pyramid. So each level in the pyramid must conform to the level above. So starting at the top, we have planning legislation. That's the Planning Act. And the Planning Act is basically the rulebook for how planning occurs in the province of Manitoba. It provides for what we're doing right now. It sets the legislation for how a hearing is held, how municipalities interact with their planning documents, so on and so forth. Below that, it's a planning regulation of the provincial land use policies. I think of it as being kind of a template development plan for all municipalities in Manitoba. It contains kind of the, the bones of what municipalities should have on their development plans. That's downloaded to specific areas. But development plans still need to be representative of those overall policies that come from the provincial planning regulation. Next one below that is a development plan. Mentioned a couple times, passed in 2017. That's the active planning document that we take guidance from in terms of overseeing planning applications. Below that, there's secondary plans. The RM does not have a secondary plan. It's an optional planning tool. But think of it as a development plan for a very specific area within a municipality. So stating the broad development plan, shrinking it to a certain area, let's say a neighborhood within a municipality, and then really teasing out how the policies would apply. So again, not here, but that's part of the planning framework. The last, last section there is the implementation tool. So we have zoning bylaws, and zoning bylaws are implemented through variations, conditional use orders, development agreements, building permits, and development permits. So we're dealing with the implementation tool portion of this pyramid. So a zoning bylaw is essentially improved by every single layer above. That's how we, that's how we build a zoning bylaw. It's got to comply with all the layers above. So the one that directly affects the zoning bylaw is the development plan. So what is a development plan? Well, a development plan is a long-range policy document adopted by the RM, but also approved by the province. So there's a joint approval of the existing development plan that exists here. The RM has approved it, but also the province has approved it to make sure that provincial policy is being represented here within the RM of Victoria Beach. The intent of a development plan is that it provides a long-term vision for a municipality by directing development through goals, objectives, and policies. General policies within a development plan apply to the entire municipality. And there's also specific policy areas that apply to designated areas. So residential areas, commercial areas, parks and open space areas. There's different policies that apply to all those different areas. It's a development plan that designates, designates land for a variety, for uses, and provides a criteria for subdivisions. So if you ever want to figure out if you can subdivide, it's the development plan that tells you whether you can or can't. If you can, you go to the zoning bylaw to find out how large or how small your laws would have to be. So all those things are taken care of at a development plan level. Development plan also contains policies that would guide how developments, such as erosion protection and mitigation would occur. That's all contained in a development plan. It provides that policy that you'd have to follow. So again, yeah, here we see a development plan in that policy hierarchy. And here's the current development plan map. Development plans are typically fairly general. They set direction for general land uses, so residential areas, community areas, parks and protected areas. As you can see, it's a very, very basic development plan map. The RM of Victoria Beach is more of a cottaging area, more of a residential area. You know, intensive industrial lands, all those other associated uses that some municipalities would have. So what is a zoning bylaw? That's the, that's the next one down in the hierarchy, and the reason that we're all here tonight. So zoning bylaw is a regulatory planning tool used by a municipality to implement the objectives and policies of the development plan. In general, the zoning bylaw divides a community up into zones. So again, similar to the development plan, residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, whatever the case may be for the municipality. One of the main things it does is it prescribes permitted and conditional uses for each zone. So that's one of the main functions of a zoning bylaw. If you have a piece of property, if I want to do something, is it a permitted use? Meaning, I still have to jump through some hoops. I have to go get permits. There are strings attached to it, but I don't have to ask counsel for it. Conditional use is when you ask counsel because it might be a use that likely requires a little bit more conversation. It may affect your neighbors a little bit more. That's why it's a conditional use. So there, there's a legislative process in place that makes sure that people are informed of what the conditional use is. And then neighbors in the community also get to be part of the decision in terms of making recommendations to counsel. The other thing that zoning bylaw does, it establishes, that's that, sorry, establishes development requirements such as minimum lot areas, building heights, and setbacks. So that's the other main thing. So if we think of zoning, we often think about dimensional standards. How high can I build my cottage? Where does it have to be located on the lot? That's, that's one of the other main things that comes out of a zoning bylaw. And then finally, there's, it sets up a process for administering a zoning bylaw. So if somebody wants to apply, let's say, for variance or conditional use, what's the process for taking those applications in? So again, zoning bylaw is an implementation tool. It's informed by every single layer above. It's typically what you end up seeing on the ground in terms of building and development. This is the existing zoning bylaw map. There's currently six different zones that have been applied. Stays back to 1969, so yeah, definitely, definitely ripe for a review. Typically, zoning regulation is reviewed a lot more often. Zoning bylaws aren't static bylaws. There's always different things that come up, and zoning bylaws are often amended based on different building technology, based on a variety of different factors, how people are using land. So zoning bylaws are, are intended to, to grow and to change over time. So the fact there hasn't really been a, a review since 1969 is, yeah. Like I said, the last, last municipality in Manitoba doesn't have a zoning bylaw. So there was a zoning bylaw that was proposed prior to the one that we're dealing with today, bylaw number 1622. It was put together by folks from the, the province as well as the municipality. The council decided not to proceed with that bylaw for a variety of different reasons. Got the map shown there. Narrowed the amount of zones down to three. So that was kind of the starting point for myself and council residents when we started holding open houses. We got feedback on this existing, or the, the proposed bylaw, and that was what we used to inform crafting a new bylaw based on comments on this bylaw. So here we are, new, new proposed zoning bylaw, bylaw number 1651. This bylaw has been informed by hundreds of residents. I think at the open houses that we had, we always, always had at least 8200 people show up, which is, which is very good. Often you don't get anybody showing up, or just a couple people. Or sometimes it's just council standing around. So there's definitely a variety of different ways that people get involved. Victoria Beach people are quite passionate about where they go to cottage on, on the weekends or where they live. So we definitely got a lot of feedback. Probably the most comment sheets I've ever received over 15 years. So thanks, everyone, for taking time to fill those out. They are helpful for us because we know what people's comments and concerns are. So one of the other things that the bylaw does, as, as mentioned, is that it, it provides a regulation to strengthen planning policy from the development plan. Right now, the existing zoning bylaw, through the planning scheme, provides limited regulation, but it doesn't necessarily move in sync with what the development plan proposes. Variety of different new zones have been proposed as part of this process. The reason for this is that we try to recognize that there are a variety of different areas throughout the RM. One set of regulation is not going to be a one-size-fits-all. So we try to create regulation that would recognize differences, differences within the municipality and reflect how land has been used historically and expectations for how that land will be used in the future. Our first open house was held on July 2023. Thanks again for those who attended. Second one was May this year. I personally and the staff from my office, we've met with the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association on numerous occasions. We've met with the Historic Property Owners Association on two occasions. My office packed up my boardroom both times. Met with the Elver Beach Cottage Owners Association, Wantasing Beach Cottage Owners Association as well, and of course, the Lakefront Association. We've met with all of these different associations that wanted to be part of this bylaw review to make sure that their concerns and questions were answered. And we're really pleased that we had the opportunity to do that. I've also had dozens, probably more than dozens, probably hundreds of calls, emails with residents via phone, emails, and virtual meetings, many meetings with counsel, and of course, correspondence with provincial departments and agencies. And that's important because ultimately, when putting together a zoning bylaw, it still needs to be reflective of those provincial policies that get downloaded from the development plan. A zoning bylaw can't deviate from what's already been allowed at a development plan level. So in terms of feedback received, there's been a bunch of feedback that has, has been submitted to counsel. I'm not going to go through the entire list because I think the, they'll be here, people here to make presentations. Some of the questions related to garage sizes, regulation for garages in the vehicle-restricted area, making sure that current provisions still exist in the new zoning bylaw, questions about private pools, whether or not they can be permitted or conditional use. And then a lot of, a lot of the questions that came in were clarification and minor typographical adjustments. So just, you know, the bylaw. As the bylaw is made, there's things that are missed, sometimes in terms of page numbers or section numbers. So just some typographical adjustments. We've also received 25 very similar letters objecting to the zoning bylaw. And since there were so many of them received, I figured I'd provide a little bit of feedback on some of those letters. So this, this is the, generally the format that was submitted to counsel. So I'm informing counsel that I object to the proposed zoning bylaw. My objection is that the proposed zoning bylaw contains provisions that allow for the construction of repiments and other structures, such as stairs and decks on public and privately owned riparian land or on immediately adjacent lands. So it's important to keep in mind that the development plan does allow for 25% of shorefront areas to be developed. That's the case across Manitoba. That's a direct download from provincial planning regulation. It states that in the development plan, and that is reflected in the zoning bylaw because the zoning bylaw must conform to the development plan. It doesn't outright let people go through a process and develop stuff adjacent to shorelines. There's still permits, depending on the application. There's still studies, all kinds of other things that can be attached to it. So it doesn't mean that it's a full-out, anyone can just go and develop on shorelines. That is not at all what this bylaw is saying. The second one was, the way and construction of structures made may be expected to undermine the integrity of the sand banks for their exasperating their erosion. As this area erodes, man may debris within and end up on public beaches, causing safety hazards and environmental damage. The riparian zone is an environmentally sensitive area that should be protected, but the bylaw has potential to make it far easier to build damaging structures with no limitations or specifications on what types of erosion areas can be built in this zone. That is not at all the case. This bylaw is proposing a conditional use application, which means there is actually, would, it would establish a formal process for reviewing and implementing potential development applications that come in. Right now, it's done on an ad hoc basis. So if somebody wants to build something adjacent to the water, the province has ceded that responsibility to the municipality. There is nothing that would trigger a public hearing. Counsel in the past, I believe, have held town halls. That's voluntary. They don't have to do that. Conditional use would actually trigger a public hearing. And people would be notified as per the Planning Act. It's a formal planning application, so that would happen. And then there can be things attached to a conditional, conditional use, which are conditions, which the public would be aware of. Conditional use also triggers a public process, as mentioned, hearing notification. And a conditional use can be used to implement those policies from the development plan. There's no other tools to implement them if you're not actually making a planning application. It's permitted use. You can go for the permit, but if there's a conditional use, there's conditions attached, so there can be. Next part of the letter stated my further objection as a proposed bylaw does not contain clear and effective protection for the beaches from such developments. The proposed bylaw is therefore contrary to the development plan since it would allow for the construction of structures which will have a negative impact on our banks, beaches, and public use of those beaches, the rates of owners and other nearby properties, and the environment. So as, as confirmed by the provincial circulation, the zoning bylaw, the proposed bylaw generally complies with the development plan. This has been confirmed by Ms. Enz's office. I guess I could just summarize that the proposed bylaw, because it contains this new regulation, would be considered far more stringent than the existing zoning regulation that takes place. So a lot of the stuff that's contained within, within those letters wouldn't necessarily be correct. The last part of the letter mentions a couple of specific sections of the bylaw, some provisions which I object include or are not, are included but are not limited to 2.4C and F, and lines on Table 3.11 concerning erosion protection measures, public property and erosion protection measures, private property. So 2.4C talks about if there are stairs going to the beach on properties, that, that is inherently where they would be. It's not saying you can go build stairs, but it's making an exception saying you don't have to go for a variance to get stairs in your front yard because that's exactly where you're going to be putting them. It's acknowledging that there's still a process. There's still permits that would have to be applied for. But as mentioned, you're allowed to develop up to 25% of your lakefront land. That's allowed by the development plan. You can't exceed it. But stairs could be part of that 25%. And there still are checks and balances in place. It's not just saying everyone can go out and build stairs. It's saying that they will be located in the front yard. That's where the stairs would go, the front yard for lands that are fronting on the lake. The front, front yard is a portion of, of the lot fronting on the lake. 2.4F concerns both front yards. I think we can tighten up the definition there or the regulation a little bit more. The intent of 2.4F is basically to state the front yard is adjacent to the lake, face the lake. And again, more stringent regulations proposed to regulate erosion protection measures. I know that was a lot. Thanks for letting me go through that. I'm hoping it's informative. There's a lot of different layers that need to be considered with this zoning bylaw. Again, really appreciate it that everyone has taken time to provide feedback, comments, reflections on what matters to them with regards to the development plan and how that can be represented in the zoning bylaw. So thanks for all the feedback received. It makes it a lot easier to write a bylaw when you get direct feedback related to what the hopes and visions are of a community. Thanks.
Thank you, Andre. I hope that provided some clarification for, for, for those comments in, in, in those letters that we received yesterday. All right, I will move on now to our delegations. The first person who signed up is Sean Taylor. Sean, are you in the building? Are you on the?
Nicholas.
No. Sean Taylor?
I don't see him coming.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Up next is Nicholas Juza, attending virtually. Nicholas, the floor is yours, sir. And you have 10 minutes, starting now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to focus my remarks upon a couple, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to focus my remarks upon a couple of specific sections of the draft bylaw, and I will provide specific suggestions for improving those sections to better align this bylaw with the Victoria Beach development plan. First, in section 2.4F, and this was just discussed, this might be a drafting error. just discussed, this might be a drafting error, but the circulated draft of the zoning bylaw says that, quote, "Lake Winnipeg shall be deemed to be the front sightline for all lots which front onto and are contiguous to Lake Winnipeg, or which front onto and are contiguous to public reserves or crown land which fronts onto Lake Winnipeg." Now, if this is just supposed to mean that the side of the lot which faces Lake Winnipeg is the front side, not the back side, that's fine, but the wording needs to be revised because that is not what it says. The current wording is that the lake itself is deemed to be the front sightline even if the properties don't actually front onto the lake, but have public lands between them and the lake. So what is written right there is that a property that overlooks, let's say, King Edward Beach, can count the public land of the beach itself as part of their setback because it's coming back from the lake, or quite possibly the whole setback, and the owners could build right up to their property line without any setback on their property. So if that was intentional, it should be reconsidered. What it sounds like from the comments that were just made was it was not intentional, and this needs to be revised then to no longer say what it does, which is that for properties that are not fronting onto the lake, the lake is still their front sightline. Okay. Secondly, regarding developments in riparian areas, Section 2.14E states that, quote, "Proposed development must not impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality," unquote. Those are very important factors, but the Victoria Beach Development Plan sets out additional considerations which must also be taken into account. These include that such developments, quote, "may not interfere with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property," unquote. That's Section 3.2.3 of the Development Plan, and that existing recreational uses in areas should be protected. That's Section 3.2.6 of the Development Plan. The zoning bylaw should be explicit that any development in riparian areas may only be permitted to proceed if they are in accordance with those principles set out in the Development Plan. So Section 2.14E of the zoning bylaw should either include the same language as those sections of the Development Plan, or at least refer to Section 3.2.3 and 3.2.6 of the plan, and possibly others as well, to make sure that it is clearly understood that any development in the riparian areas will only be approved if they are in accordance with the principles of the Development Plan. Further, the current draft of Section 2.14E also says that, quote, "If determined necessary, the municipality may require geotechnical engineered plans or environmental assessments prepared at the developer's expense for assurance," unquote. Given that the Development Plan at Section 3.2.3 sub B sub 1 requires that an assessment be done and prohibits any development or intensified use of land in areas susceptible to flooding, erosion, or slope instability without an assessment, the bylaw language stating only that an assessment may be required could cause potential confusion about whether an assessment is mandatory. And frankly, the experience of last winter demonstrates that there's already some confusion around this requirement in the Development Plan. This bylaw should correct that, not add to it. Section 2.14E of the zoning bylaw should state that a geotechnical and an environmental assessment shall be required for any developments in riparian areas. Further, Section 2.14E should clearly state that erosion protection measures are developments which require geotechnical environmental assessments, since that was a point which council considered unclear in the Development Plan last year. The section should also state that geotechnical environmental assessments must be made of the current proposed design. It should not be sufficient that at some point in the past, an assessment was done of a different proposal at the same location. And finally, Section 2.14E should clarify that a proposed development will only be allowed to proceed if no technical issues or significant environmental harm are identified by the assessments. So Section 2.14E would then read something like, "Proposed development must not impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality, nor interfere with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property, and existing recreational uses in areas should be protected from potentially impatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the Development Plan. Geotechnical and environmental assessments prepared at the developer's expense will be required of the current plans for any proposed development, including but not limited to plans for erosion protection measures, and approval will only be granted if these confirm the plans have no technical issues and will not have effects prohibited by the first sentence of this section or other negative environmental impacts." This will allow the bylaw to fulfill its role of implementing and clarifying the Development Plan rather than adding to any existing confusions. Counsel has received several objections to the current bylaw for providing insufficient protection for beaches from the potential harms of revetments, making changes such as those I have just suggested, by being clear that developments will only be allowed to proceed if, in accordance with the Development Plan, they do not interfere with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, and sustainability of public and privately owned land, and that they have received geotechnical environmental assessments to confirm that, might be a step towards responding to those concerns. That basically concludes my presentation. I will provide a written copy by email to council for your convenience of it, or of my original prepared version. I deviated slightly as I spoke, particularly in the first section because I began referring back to the presentation. I'm done. I know I haven't used my time, but I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I will answer questions, of course.
Any comments or response to that? Andre or Ellen?
Nothing on my end. I mean, it's good to council has received that feedback. I guess the only thing I would ask for the chair is whether or not, because this is all different information than what was contained in the letter, if there's still a formal objection being submitted.
So there's... Are you still submitting a formal objection to the zoning bylaw?
So I actually hadn't sent an email myself because I am not an eligible voter. My father is the property owner of my cottage. My sister has her own. I am not currently on either of those titles, so I was aware that legally I could not provide an objection. Haven't done so.
Correct.
This is just a comment.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. Thank you very much, Nicholas. Appreciate your time and your comments. All right. Up next is Nancy Sarchuk. And you're with us, Nancy.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You have the floor, Nancy.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor McMorris, council, Mr. Freezen, and fellow participants. I am Nancy Sarchuk, and I'm the president of the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening from Montreal. As many of you know, the VBCOA is a membership-based advisory committee. It was founded in the 1970s to, and I quote, "preserve the historic, unique character of the vehicle restricted area of Victoria Beach in keeping with the intentions of the founders of the beach." I remind you of this because this mission statement is the VBCOA's foundation. It informs all our decisions, orients our priorities, and will provide the framework for our presentation this evening. Let me begin then by first acknowledging the scope of the zoning bylaw, which was clearly quite a feat to put together. Really a huge thanks to council for all the hard work they've put into this and for the hours of exciting reading that they have provided me with. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Andre Freezen, the planner, who just spoke. He was extraordinarily patient with me and with Blake Taylor, who helped me construct our presentation. He walked us through the fine points of the document. His depth of knowledge is impressive, and we are better able to speak on behalf of the VBCOA because of him. And before I begin with our questions, I would like to recognize here that, from our perspective, there are positive takeaways for the VRA in the bylaw, including measures like those outlined in 2.19 Protection and Retention of Trees, which regulates clearcutting, or standards mentioned in 3.2 that limit the footprint of all structures on a property to 25%. We've all seen the for sale sign go up next door only to wonder what we were in for. These kinds of measures will help enormously, and they contribute to the protection and enhancement of our natural Victoria Beach surroundings. And if I can add one small point here, and I'm getting into board unapproved territory, sorry, board, but I'm sure we can all agree that 4.8.1, allowing for a water depth of greater than two feet in hot tubs, is a huge win for everyone. Just kidding. It's not in our mandate. We're not objecting to anything there. But really, there's much in the document to recommend it, and we look forward to following it through its natural progress. Could council please note here a formal request on the part of the VBCOA to be advised on the next steps of this process, and for council to respond to our concerns in the absence of any formal objection on our part? And that said, a few questions. I have five, four or five. I'll try to get to them all. And yeah, some of them have already been touched on a little bit. I think I'll just go with what I've prepared, and if there's overlap, so be it. I actually wanted to kick off the presentation this evening with parking, which may seem like an unusual place to start, but given the VBCOA's commitment to maintaining the VRA's iconic tree-lined ambiance in the avenues, we have noted that in 2.17, 2.18, there doesn't seem to be a maximum parking allowance size for single unit dwellings, and we were wondering if council would be open to giving more specific guidelines for these entryways, limiting them to, say, something in the neighborhood of 11 and a half feet. This would be consistent not only with the traditional appearance of the avenues, but would also be ensuring that parking spaces meet the accessibility requirements now and in the future. I also have a word about zones. I did speak with Andre about this, and I know that I'm probably wading into territory that's a bit more complicated, but I'll go ahead with it. We do recognize the complexity of addressing multiple zoning realities, even just within the VRA where we can count four distinctive zones in the plan. And we can appreciate the changes to this four-zone approach would require some downstream adjustments. However, and to state the obvious, the shoreline south of Yacht Club Beach that extends to Pelican Point is distinctly different from the shoreline north from Yacht Club Beach and up to Canot Beach. Yet the bylaw has taken a one-size-fits-all approach in designating these areas. In the interest of better clarity for both council, who ultimately has discretion in issuing development permits, and applicants seeking permits for development, would it maybe make sense to distinguish these areas in the bylaw? So could council consider a slight modification where the southern section, where properties have no beachfront, be deemed as something like VRR3A, and the northern section, where the major public beaches, crown lands, are situated as something like VRR3B, or some distinction of that sort? Short of that, could exceptions be made in specific clauses related to these riparian areas that would help set their distinctive realities apart? If council doesn't feel that such an accommodation is possible directly in the bylaw, would it then be open to having the distinction recognized in a future special development plan for the Thirdly, and this does touch on the Development Plan, so again, maybe a little bit of overlap, but we noted in the conclusion to Section 2.14 that, quote, "For development permit applications within the riparian area, in addition to the application requirements set out in Sections 5.5 and 5.9, the RM of VB may require proof of issuance for permits required by provincial and federal authorities, and a tree survey showing existing vegetation." This is an excellent safeguard. Additionally, however, given that preserving riparian health, particularly banks and beaches in the northern VRR3 reach, is a fundamental benefit to all cottage owners, could this section include a further measure to strengthen protections for this most vulnerable section of our riparian areas, the northern reach, in the form of a requirement for an environmental impact assessment, as well as a geotechnical engineering plan, bringing it in line with the Development Plan? Again, if this cannot be added to the zoning bylaw for various reasons, could council look at including it in a future special development plan for the VRA as I just mentioned? A couple of smallish points for clarification. We were looking at 2.14J, which in our reading seems a little ill-defined. It reads, quote, "Flood protection and erosion control measures which exceed 25% of the total riparian area may be permitted at the discretion of council by variance." Could council elaborate on what factors would be considered in this discretionary process? What criteria would be in place to allow for council to make an informed decision? And what types of additional consultations, approvals, or assessments would guide the discretion of council? We'd be interested in seeing some clarification and precision in this section. Similarly, we have a number of questions about the following proviso in the conclusion of 2.14, which reads, "In order to bring properties into compliance or to address site-specific issues, council may vary the requirements of this bylaw and/or enter into rehabilitation, maintenance agreements with property owners." And we'd like to better understand this possibility of varying requirements and entering into agreements with property owners. We're just unclear on the meaning and application of this. So if council could provide us with a more complete explanation of this point, that would be much I hope I'm doing okay for time. I just want to turn our attention to some principles of inclusion and transparency in the development process. It can't be lost on anyone here that many of our membership have historically felt disenfranchised by a process that often leaves them out in the cold, literally and figuratively speaking. The reality is, the majority of our members are summer residents. Consequently, off-season hearings and town hall meetings relegate the majority of our membership to the sidelines, as many are not only not in VB, but, like myself, many are not even in the province. Would council commit to adding to the bylaw proviso, I use that word a lot, that any proposals for significant alteration to the riparian areas, or indeed, all areas, receive a public hearing or town hall meeting when the majority of cottage owners are both present and actively engaged in their summer cottage experience, that is, the summer season? This added transparency would, we believe, only be of benefit to the entire community. And finally, I wanted to end on a forward-facing note. It's not technically under the jurisdiction of the bylaw, but is intimately connected with it, and that is the issue of enforcement. With this new zoning bylaw, we will have an up-to-date framework for moving our community forward, a system of bylaws, clauses, permits, and public hearings, and more, that are being put into place to guide the community into the 21st century. We now implore council to see that these laws and safeguards are respected and enforced. The time for turning a blind eye has passed.
Nancy, sorry, time's up.
I have such a nice thing to say at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate your presentation. And could you email us your comments? That would be extremely helpful.
It's already been done.
Okay, thank you so much. Can I ask, are you in support of this bylaw, or are you lodging any opposition or objections to this bylaw?
We're not lodging an objection to the bylaw at this time.
So you support the bylaw in the form that it is in?
Yes. I did make a request for, yes.
Yes, understanding that, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andre, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments at this time. All for council to consider.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Nancy. All right, I will now move on to our list of people when they signed in. I don't know, there's only three pages. I will call your name out. If you wish to speak, you may do so. Pat Gartrell?
No.
Thank you. Melanie Tulley?
No.
Laura Jones?
I'll speak. You've been up for 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You want 20 minutes?
And then...
Okay, I had two questions, and they're actually for the planner, if he could help. Just reflecting on Nick Juza and Nancy Sarchuk representing myself and other cottage owners as the VB Cottage Owners Association. I was wondering about, with your helpful schematic, thanks for going over the legislative kind of... Thanks for going over the legislative kind of authorities and what's related to what. That was really helpful. And so with the question of requiring a geotechnical investigation and environmental assessment on every work that would be on the riparian zone, I'm just wondering if that's consistent, and maybe you're the one, I can't remember your name, but who would know, but if it would be consistent with the provincial land use plan across Manitoba?
Go ahead.
Yeah, good question. So all of those items are already covered in the development plan. The development plan provides policy direction, which are those policy statements. That's all set out and already been approved by council and the province. A zoning bylaw typically doesn't get into those policy statements. It provides regulation. The only, the only applications that can be tied to a zoning bylaw are subdivision, where the zoning bylaw regulation would apply in terms of designing how your lot would be sized. A conditional use, which we've recommended for certain applications because it triggers a public process. A variance, if you want relief or minor relief from certain types of requirements of the bylaw. Let's say you can't feasibly do a 15-foot side yard, you can only do 12 via variance. Anything else related to a development application? I don't think so. But yeah, basically, those requirements are already, like the provincial requirements, they're in the development plan already. That's already been passed by council and the province. Those are things that come from above regulation at a provincial level, and they've already been included in the development plan. And they would involve the province commenting on them. And this is more of a local bylaw that's enforced by council. Development plan, or development plan is approved by the province as well as by council. So that's why those things are in there, because it's provincial regulation.
Okay, so it's already been taken care of through provincial regulation?
It's already in the development plan.
Thank you. And also, I guess I probably can't ask Nancy a question.
No, you cannot here.
But I just wanted to make a comment that my opinion or perspective, and I don't know very many, or if anyone was solicited in terms of representing us as cottage owners with that Bittery Beach Cottage Owners Association stance on what's important with the development bylaw.
Okay, I think that's something that you should take up with the VBCOA. Thank you very much, Laura. Can I ask then, Laura, are you in support of or in opposition to this bylaw?
Oh, I, I heard that we can wait until the end.
Oh, all right. Hedging your bets, all right. Thank you. Next on my list is Gina Leece. All right, you do not wish to speak. Mary Hansen? Greg Hansen?
Yes.
Please take the mic, Greg.
I would just like to first of all, thank.
We need the microphone for everyone to hear you.
Right up here. Can you hear me? Oh, no.
Relate.
There it is, got it. Okay, can you hear me?
I'd just like to first of all, thank counsel and thank Andre for the very thorough process that you've gone through. We all need to know that we need a zoning bylaw, and I think you've done a stellar job. We, we and the Lakefront Association have submitted our requests for counsel to consider. And I just say, I put down on there that I was in favor of, or I was not objecting. And that's on the basis of provided our suggestions were included and that some of the suggestions that were considered here are not included. And so I guess I better switch my point to objecting. Because if the bylaw gets amended, I understand that I can't object if I don't object here, so.
Is that correct? Does that make sense to you, Andre?
Or it could reserve or?
Maybe you can explain that part.
Yeah.
It can be reserved.
It can be reserved to the end. All right, thank you.
As long as the hearing remains open.
All right, as long as the hearing remains open, and that means as long as we don't adjourn the actual hearing. All right.
Yep, we're closed if you're.
Close, right. You can adjourn it, you can't close it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Kate Moyer?
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kate Moyer. I have a planner, 20 years' experience throughout Manitoba, Vancouver Island, have lots of experience with zoning bylaws of all plans along areas that are sensitive and erosion. I did work in our Bull's Asher planning office as well back in the day, and I'm now the Director of Planning with M. Richards and Associates, a planning firm in Winnipeg. I'm here for information and just to provide some guidance. But I have reviewed the bylaw. I have reviewed the engagement process. My master's is in environmental management, and I have a certification in public participation with IB2 Canada, which is the International Association of Public Participation. The process has gone through very thorough. The engagement has been well done. It's exceeded what is required in the planning process. And I think the bylaw is very consistent from a professional planning perspective with the development plan and with minor amendments that were heard that were typographical and maybe minor in nature. I think that it's a great bylaw that will serve this community well.
Thank you very much. That's appreciated. Tez McIntosh? Thank you. Megan MacLeod? Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity if they wish, so. Joanne Gibson? Thank you. Gord Polton? Thank you, Gord. Oh, boy. Oh, Jim Chapel? No? All right, thank you. Jersey Zalinski? Thank you very much. Walter Kleinschmidt?
Is that close enough?
No, sorry, it has to be right up. And you have to turn it on.
Okay, it's on, thank you.
Much better, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Walter Kleinschmidt, and I'm here as other people, which are allowed to speak, because I'm not a resident or a direct taxpayer to the community here. Thank you for the opportunity to address this meeting today on the zoning 1651 bylaw. And I also want to express my apologies for having missed the previous meeting, because normally I would have been here this summer on the line with other things, but mostly dealing with city Winnie Bay bylaws. And for some of us, I was not here, so my apologies if my comments should have been said earlier and been more constructive. I want to concentrate, I'm concentrating on a couple of definitions only and a couple of regulations. In my comments, for instance, a lot of it had to do with 214, which Nicola, as Nicola does comment on the detail, the weed of it, and I was talking about the opening paragraph. So on page 51, the first definition I want to refer to is the ordinary high watermark. The definition is fairly universal. It's been used for centuries, never mind decades. It's a natural boundary for the water body. It's applied locally as determined by surveys. In Manitoba, we rely on provincially issued procedure ISVs initiated by registrar general in examination of surveys. The definition in the bylaw continues after the normal definition, which, sorry, continues with what becomes effectively an alternative definition. And I find that as confusing. And although I'm not a lawyer, I've spent most of my career dealing with all matters of development. And if you put two ideas that are a bit different, you're inviting lawyers to the table and asking something that nobody here wants. So I suggest that the definition read, "ordinary high watermark means the level at which the water in a water body or waterway has been held or appears sufficient to leave a mark on the vegetation in or so along the bank." The line identified in a plan or survey as the ordinary high watermark. And stop there and remove from that definition or the line on a plan or survey delineating the bed of a water body or waterway as per the RM Bittery Beach Development Plan. Because development plan and the plan map one attached are not officially survey plans. Basically, the intention is valid, but the wording could be taken by someone and imply, hey, I like that line better than the line on the survey plan. So I think it doesn't change the intention, and I support otherwise the definition. In the same manner, a riparian area, the definition provides in general is once more correct than old definition. And it totally goes back to 1080 when the Norman conquest arrived in England, or conquered. But the context of the development planning is provide consistent application of the riparian area. It has a defined measurement of one and a half chains from the ordinary high watermark. Why provincial origin at 200 feet should be 99 feet? I'll never be, that kind of bothers me because I'm technically a fool, I guess. And I suggest the following, and the riparian area is very specifically defined, so I'll suggest that the reading, the definition read, "riparian area means an area of land on the banks of a water body, not or near." Because what is or near? Five feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, because Lake Winnie Bay is big. So on the banks, because the banks are defined in the survey manual, of a water body that due to the influence of water is capable of naturally supporting an ecosystem that is distinct from the ecosystem of the adjacent upland areas. And then I've added what was in the previous bylaw, and I think also the provincial guidelines. For the purpose of this bylaw, the riparian area is measured horizontally 100 feet. I don't know why 100, but I don't object inland from the ordinary high watermark. It's specific, it's established, there's tons of precedent, and I think it's useful. The riparian strip on the bank of the lake is a natural phenomenon. It's done by nature. It moves imperceptibly over time. It has all kinds of consequences when you've got major waves. It exists irrespective of ownership of the land. It just happens. So the riparian area exists for the government, for the musically owned land, and for the privately owned land. And therefore, the respect and the development should apply for all. Now, under the general regulation, Part 2, Riparian 214, the Riparian Area, which I share the concern of Nicholas in particular, or I guess if you wanted to the very details, I looked again at the introduction and suggested it's currently drafted. The section is primary, the opening section is primarily a description, an opinion, and not a regulation and such. The definition for riparian area is in Part 2 of the bylaw, which I've just talked about. It doesn't have to be repeated there, because that's one word different, again, two words at the table. A repeat of the definition is not needed. Some of the history is interesting, but not relevant as part of a regulation. Some of the explanations and warnings, established, confirmed, lack boundaries, et cetera, to establish ownership, can more correctly be added to the introduction, how to use the zoning bylaw. But it's not part of the regulation in itself. The regulation is telling you what to build, how to build it, where to build it. The applicable general regulation, applicable to 214 riparian areas logically starts at the paragraph, "Development shall be permitted in riparian areas in accordance with the zone in which it is located, provided it complies with the following conditions: 1, 2, 3, close up, and the final two paragraphs, subject to the comment that Nicholas made. But some of those comments will be resolved by a change in the definition of Frank." And last comment, two comments, I guess. In establishing zone, I notice in the description of a lakefront residential zone is defined in a hand-based manner. Generally have, where they generally have, drives me crazy. It's subjective, it's open to debate. Based on examination of representative plans of the lakefront residential areas, and I've spent the money, $22 each, for a whole bunch of plans. So I've taken the whole of all the lakefront facing, not all of them, but the representative numbers. There are different definitions there. The foreign wording is proposed as more appropriate. "Lakefront residential zone is intended to provide regulation for residential uses on properties that are not separated from the edge of Lake Winnie Bay by crown reserve." And that is how the drawing shows, that in fact is the definition of that. And to generally have ownership of the property up to the water's edge of the lake, Winnie Bay, is redundant. And because the word edge is not defined, it's also confusing. So basically, those properties all have, or they're connected to the lake up to the edge of the lake Winnie Bay, which is the ordinary high watermark. It doesn't talk about ownership, and that brings that to the debate. The description of RR3 has the same characteristics as VRR3, and therefore should have the same description, except for the reference to restricted area, right now that difference. Yeah, fine, I think that's an oversight that might have been covered. VVR3 and RR3 should further be clarified by deleting the word "adjacent or," again, another "or," from the definitions. Therefore, it should be as follows. VVR3 is intended to provide regulation to preserve the historical character of residential uses on properties located in close proximity to Lake Winnie Bay and generally separated from the water by public lands within the VRA as identified in the figure line. And the RR3 is intended to provide regulation to preserve historical character of residential uses on properties located in close proximity to Winnie Bay and generally separated from the water by public lands, which is the riparian zone that belongs to the public. So basically, the second one is extended to match the first one. In the last comment, just because every crew for dogs finds a low tempo. On the map, the properties on adjacent on Pork Wargay Street, which is shown as RR3, which is basically between Pridey and Mill Road, Old Mill Road, are shown as RR3, but in fact, they're not even close to the lake. They're separated by a very large lake shore, lakefront residential zone of quite a few acres. And therefore, they do not meet their criteria.
All right, your time is up, sir. Thank you very much. You made it. All right, thank you very much, Walter. Up next, Tom Akerstream.
Hello?
Is it possible to go back to one of your original slides? The first slide that had the first zoning diagram on it?
Try. It's only one stuff. Nope.
That's the old, that is an old map.
That's a development plan.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm sorry, I just have to be able to see it here. So if I'm reading this correctly, the green, which goes all along the lake, is part of protective area under that plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as mentioned, it's following the development plan, and development plan is just that, for future development. And why at a time of environmental sustainability, et cetera, are we not leaving this area protected, or are we developing it?
I can answer that. We're not developing that.
So, but then on the next slide, further up, it had different bylaws affecting that area that was no longer green and protected.
Is this the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Because it is, it's just, you kind of see the green here. It's still parts and open space, I guess.
Yeah. I thought it was green all the way around.
It is all the way up.
So that area that was originally protected is still protected?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just, and then the other point was on the development plan, it generally complies. And like the gentleman before me, why does it not comply completely? Like, how could there be ambiguity against complying with the plan? Like, in what areas does it not comply?
Can I allow our planner to try and weigh in on that? Can I allow our planner to try and weigh in on that?
Generally complies is often used in provincial circulations, that's something that comes from the provincial report.
But not in actual law or bylaws, it's not?
Yeah, generally comply would mean that it generally complies with the intent of the bylaw.
But when you get down into the specifics, I'm not going to get the, when it gets down into the specifics, it complies.
Correct.
Generally, so the word generally, I prefer it's removed, because that implies that it's to be moved.
All encompassing.
Yeah, thank you. And then I have another question. If the cottages along, and this is a question, I'm not quite sure on this, if the cottages that face the lake's front yard is now considered the side that faces the lake, then the same zoning would be applied to the back area of that as the other cottages in. So then as you're coming down the street, you're going to see the back side of development. I mean, I'm only looking at most of the cottages here, have the outhouses and everything in the, in the back kind of, so now they're going to be on the front. I know you can't redo outhouses, et cetera, but I'm just saying now, from the front of the street, that whole, the dimensions of it are going to be the same as the dimensions on the back, and they should also be altered to reflect the fact that it's a specific site. Because you're going to be just seeing the back side of the lot, which...
Which is what we see now, essentially.
Yeah, now, but not point, because it was built...
Along shoreline properties.
But it was built to the variances of that being the front yard. Now, under the other variance, under the other zoning, they will be allowed to put structures right up again, like the 10 feet off the road. So you're going to be walking down, if a person wanted, they could put a bunkhouse 10 feet off the road on that side of the property, correct?
If they're shoreline property.
If they're shoreline property. Which is kind of the, you know...
They're not changing it.
We're not, yeah, it's the way it's always been, though, we're not changing that.
Oh, so that, so then the people on the shoreline, the front was always lake?
Yes.
And so just always built right there.
Yes.
I mean, just one clarification of a couple, my key point was that the protected area remains protected.
Agreed.
It's like an hour and a half discussion when they're trying to figure that part.
Thank you very much, Mr. Akersmee. Karen Akersmee? Patrick Hooger? Thank you, Patrick. Reg Wall? Doreen Wall? Greg Saunders? Are you Mr. Wall or Mr. Saunders? All right, thank you.
Not the real Mr. Saunders. Actually, all my questions have been answered.
Great.
And I cannot object, as I found out, I'm in the process of buying the property for my dad, but it's not officially answered. He has concerns that have been answered as far as I'm concerned.
Good for you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for coming. Des Traynor? Thank you. Valley Baschudi? Thank you. Diane Boyce? Terry Boyce? Linda McMillan?
She's here.
She was here, there she is.
She's there.
I'm coming to speak to this issue because of several things that have occurred. As many people in the room are aware, I've been here 40 years as a cottage owner and as a permanent resident. I come with a great deal of experience, I've sat on the original shoreline committee, I was a counselor and passed and worked extremely hard on the wording of the development plan. I was originally involved in the zoning bylaw as first proposed by the people out of Bozessure, and I continue to have concerns. I would mainly like to say, we still aren't meeting accessibility levels at all. The plan was not presented in a way that was accessible to anyone who needed an auditory version of it, so that I have not been able to read it completely, because I can't read, and there was no audible proportion available. So it does limit accessibility for many people. I'm concerned about the fact that we have not followed the proposals of the planning that we spent $600,000 developing. We did the one thing along the shoreline in the last year that was completely told not to do, and the more it is continuing, the more concerned I am. Barricading, putting rocks along the shoreline may not be the most intelligent thing that has been done in the last hundred years, and may not meet the needs of most people in the community. It certainly meets the needs of small interest groups, and while they pay higher taxes than those of us who live back, there are many more of us who pay taxes on the back than pay taxes on the front. Our dollars are actually more. I'm very concerned about the process we've been through in that. Small interest groups were consulted, larger areas such as the one I live in, in the Northwest, were not consulted in any way, shape, or form. Just because you call yourself the Sandy Bay Association, and there's four of you, does not mean it represents the 200 of us in our region. And I do not believe that a small interest group should be able to reach council and have words presented that is to their advantage and not to the advantages of the whole RM. And by RM, I mean resort community. We are one of three resort municipalities, not rural municipalities, as has been suggested by our zoning man. So we have several things. I'm concerned about the rocks, I'm concerned about the fact that we have not coordinated this plan to the development plan. I'm concerned about the issue that was stated that you can do whatever you want on your lakefront for 25% of your property. I don't remember that ever being in the double development plan, and I certainly spent enough hours next to my computer making sure that that came up. It's quite possible that this council, because it communicates so poorly, has not, has changed that, and said, yeah, you can have 25% of your, fracture your property, develop right up to the shoreline. But the last time I saw it, it was 30 feet back, and that was a change from the original ching and a half, 50 feet back. And yes, it's been caused by 100 years' worth of erosion, I understand that. I fully am aware that there were roads out there that are no longer in existence. But I do think better consultation is needed. I do not see any particular reason for rushing this through with meetings that are held at the beginning of October when no one is around. You really should be having these meetings, as has been mentioned, in June, July, and August, when the bulk of taxpayers have the ability to come. I know that there are people here who believe, well, it can be done online, you don't need to appear in person. Well, that's not really a good way of communicating, and communication has been one of the issue. So I object to rushing this zoning bylaw through. I object to not making it accessible so we can actually understand all 57 pages, or 67 pages, I've been told both, so I don't know which is true. And I really think we should slow down all public meetings in the summer, when people can have their input. This zoning bylaw may be the last in the province, but we actually have a plan that's been there since 69. I've worked on it, so I know it's still there unless this council canceled it, and that's another possibility.
Forget your personal window, can you please get to your...
No, no, I don't know, I don't know if you have. It's quite possible that it doesn't cancel it.
We can't cancel it.
Okay, well, that's fine, I don't know, because I'm told we don't have a zoning bylaw.
We have the 1969 planning scheme and the 2004 consolidated amendments.
That's true. Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, Penny, because I really couldn't tell by what I've been able to access. So I'm objecting to this on the basis of, it really hasn't been a full consultation with the taxpayers of the area, it's been more of a consultation with local, local separate groups rather than all of us. And I'm worried that, this is going to be around for 50 years, we surely should take a little bit more time and do a somewhat better job of doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Linda. Do you want my paper? Sure, thank you very much. I don't know if the pen worked as I'm writing, but I wrote it. Hopefully, I'll be able to see that. Thank you. All right, up next, in the interest of moving things, keeping things moving, Linda Cleaver. Thank you, Linda. Kevin Dubay? Thank you. Chris Bishop? Jean Carter? Rick Reese? Thank you. Dan Armadovich? Thank you, Dan. Jamie Dawson?
Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Barry Vanilla? I'm sorry, I don't, I can't read the word, the...
I know.
Vanilla, sorry. Thank you. Glenn Henderson? Noella Ramsey? Lisa Lewis?
Yes.
I don't think I need a microphone, I'm going to be very quick.
Please take a microphone, it's just easier for the recording.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, council, and thank you for, from the guests and all the people who are here. I just want to say that I do feel that we have been working on this particular bylaw for a long, long time. Counter to other, hearing from others, I do feel that we have enough information to move forward, and specifically in the areas of, if it meets with the provincial guidelines, then I am comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with what council has done to move this forward. So I am in favor of moving forward, because I know we need to, and I know we can take a lot more time on other very important issues that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, myself. Ian Robertson? Thank you. Brian Galacki?
I don't think so, I already submitted.
Thank you, Brian. Bob Thompson? Thank you, Bob. Mark Pritchard? Brian Bowden? Thank you, Brian. Ken Capell? Thank you. Mary McIntosh? Hardy Rahn? R-A-H-N, I believe, or Rohn, sorry, my apologies.
I have a German accent.
Well, I do know.
So, my wife and I were on Olomson, we've been here seven years, we built a new place there. Firstly, thank you to council for the zoning bylaw process of the last year and completing additional public engagement, and thanks to Landmark Planning and Andre for playing up with us, who we'd met in his office just to get some clarifications and the time he took to do that. Having said that, please consider making a few more minor edits to the bylaw, I'm speaking in favor of the bylaw, just, I know you're going to ask that question. So on Table 3.1, where we list the carriage suite coach house, be permitted to use in the table rather than a conditional use, in the LS zone, also, there should be some new specific standards added that may include the maximum size and height. Right now, the maximum height is 16 feet, so putting a carriage house over a garage, and the garage is only 10 feet, you've got a six-foot space, it just doesn't make sense, right? So I think there's a clarification required, which I would, I'm just reading my document, which I assume would reflect the garage sizes. There's currently no size indicated for a carriage suite or coach house, and we would assume that would only create to the size of garage allowed. We just feel the lack of detail will create confusion and unnecessary variance requests. Table 3.2, on page 21, in the LR zone, in the accessory road, indicates height restrictions of 16 feet, and again, this is referring to the carriage suite coach house, as an accessory used above garage, the maximum height will need to be increased to 28 feet like principal residents. Same for R1, R2, and R3 zones, where these height exceptions could be listed in the use specific section. Both these notes, if accepted, will clear and will eliminate the need of variances, interpretation of the bylaw, which also can lead to significant frustrations for property owners. The carriage suite coach house is only applicable in certain zones, which are generally larger properties, not having this defined property seems like a issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Jerry Barasa? Good, thank you, Jerry. Ellen, pardon me, Glenn Lester?
I emailed my name this afternoon, I don't know if I missed it, deadline or not, or anything.
I, I only saw emails up till noon, and I didn't see anything after that, but well, if it's there, I'll see it tomorrow when I get back to the office, so we'll respond.
Okay, that'll, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Are you objecting, or are you in support, Glenn?
I guess technically speaking, I'm objecting because I suggested some changes, so, you know, but you guys have done a really good job, and put a lot of work into this, I feel almost embarrassed not saying I'm objecting.
Well, let's see what, what your email has to say.
Just give us a conditional approval.
Yeah. All right, lighten things up. Next on, thank you, Glenn, next on the list is Karen Kumka. Thank you, Karen. Tom Robinson? Bruce Owen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Nancy Sarchek has spoken. Dave Jockling?
No, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you for joining us, all right. Nicholas has spoken, Blake Taylor. I believe he left. Oh my gosh.
Was that everyone?
Is that everyone? Does anyone else wish to speak on the bylaw? All right, well, thank you very much. So, I might need a little bit of help here, gentlemen. Do you want me to now exit from the committee of the whole?
If no one else wishes to speak, then you can, yes.
So will I be, Andre and Ellen, will I be, will I be closing the hearing?
No.
No, or just adjourning the hearing?
You have another resolution after this, you're just getting out, so you won't be hearing any more presentations today. Is that okay to do that, sort of, on you? Because then the final thing would be the adjournment, and that'll say whether you're closing the hearing or postponing.
Thank you for your patience. All right, so then, you want me to read number two. Exit in committee of the whole, be it resolved in council of the rural municipality of Victoria Beach, exit the committee of the whole, may I have a moover? Fran, thank you, for one second. Discussion?
Just for clarity, this would allow us to reopen at a later date if necessary without public announcement, is that correct?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, but I maybe get clarity more if the planning act is changed, because these are, this committee of the whole is kind of an older formality that I wasn't sure if we needed to keep that on.
Yeah, so if, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how it works with your, the committee of the whole, but whether it's council or, okay. but whether it's council or, okay. So if council chooses, if you say want to keep the conversations open and hear any other objections and feel that you need to continue the public hearing, that you would schedule a date today so everybody in attendance would know when that hearing is so you don't have to advertise. Or if you think that there's been enough discussion and you've heard enough from the public as of this point, then you can close the hearing and then make those necessary changes. And I guess just based on the comments tonight and the comments that we had with the province, I don't believe that those changes would be major and would require a second public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, we can evaluate that later, too. So if council chooses to close the hearing and we look at the changes made and we say, you know what, maybe we need a second public hearing, we could do that at that time.
But doing that would trigger another, if we close it, would trigger another 40-day delay and advertising, et cetera, and that would take us into, I don't know, December, potentially, yes.
Yeah.
Can we postpone and then cancel if nothing further comes up?
I would prefer to close the hearing. I think we have heard a lot from residents and we've had numerous discussions and consultations. I believe we've heard a lot. I believe we've got some great feedback.
I agree with that as well, Penny.
See?
I would only say that, like, you know, it's important that we do get this right, so we shouldn't be worried about any 40 days. But I'm perfectly fine with closing the hearing right now. We're going to be going into second reading. We still have one more after that. So there's still sort of, we have a little bit more room just to make sure that we tailor everything. I don't think that there's any reason that we need to postpone.
I would agree with that, and I think most of council would agree and understand that we have heard some things tonight that will, some were changes that will go into second reading, which will then be published for everybody to look at and comment on. So to the extent to which this might form the ongoing progress, thank you very much for your input.
I have one more question. Some people have reserved their objection or supported the bylaw. How do we notify them and how do they notify us if they now choose to object or withdraw their objection?
Ask them.
Or show, well, I can't, they're not all here, number one. We did receive several emails. So how does that process work for council? If I could get some clarity from the planning rules.
So, yeah, you've received, like you said, written objections and then objections here tonight. So all of those objections, they're counted. I know that there was probably some people in the audience who wanted to reserve and I guess object at the end, so then they would have to object before the hearing is closed out tonight. And you would have that on the record.
But they don't know what changes we're going to make.
They would still virtually have to object before the closing because then if council, so then if changes are made before second reading and then council gives the second reading to the changed bylaw, they can then, they'll get notified, say that you've given second reading, and they can submit a second objection. Or if those changes have been addressed, then they just don't submit a second objection.
Boy, that's quicker.
What you're saying then is that the second reading, the objections from tonight don't count. We start over again with the objections.
No, they still count, but under the planning act, when you go through the objection process for zoning bylaws specifically, there's, they have to be taken in twice. So you get the initial objections, and then people have the opportunity after second reading has been given to submit a second objection.
Or remove.
Yes.
Okay.
Or remove that objection.
Okay. So.
So people need to say now before we close whether they object or not? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
So how do we do that? Do they just send up?
Well, some of you didn't write down. You were going to wait to the end.
Right. Sorry, I know it's been a long evening, but we want to make sure we do this right.
There's somebody with a question.
I have a question. I haven't spoken because I'm still reading. I don't feel informed enough. But also, my question would have been more personal because we object to changes that just concern us. We sent you an email objecting probably three years ago, but we have never gotten a response. So before this all ends up being finished and I forfeit my, like, my opportunity to object. Like, I don't know how this is supposed to work.
What's your name?
Shuti. D S H O U T Y.
Remember when you came in?
Yeah.
I would read through every name and who has marked out an opposition. I'll go through the list again. Do you want me to do?
Yes. I'm just trying to find Val's name here. There it is, yes.
So Val, I'll mark you down as opposition, so that counts.
Yeah, but I also checked opposition.
Yeah, I scribbled out the information when I left in opposition.
Nothing to contribute that would have interested anybody else, I guess. It's more like a question I would like answered fast.
We did start this whole process over. I do recall receiving emails from you in the past.
Why do I have them?
Pardon me?
Yeah, probably three years ago.
There's two more people with hands up.
Yeah, this is just on the process. So if we object tonight.
Correct.
Then does that mean there's going to be modifications made? Or it's just, it's the second reading will be the same? Because then how, if I object tonight, how do I see what modifications are made to the second reading?
Well, I think the process, it sounds like it's going to be that the hearing will close tonight for feedback from you. And everyone who's objected up until now, we will obviously take that down, take it into consideration. All the feedback that we've gotten from all the objections, Andre and council will edit the first draft bylaw. And we will obviously have to advertise it, or redo the second reading and then.
Second reading.
We'll do a second reading, and then we will send you a letter to all the people who objected initially. You'll get a chance to read through the new draft. Yeah, and then submit the letter back to us saying, we still object or we recall our objection at that time. Is that correct?
Yeah, just for clarification.
Yeah, for me, too.
Going out at the back.
I just have a question for clarification. So if we do not object tonight, but under second reading, is there still an opportunity to object? Is this a point of clarification?
No, because the hearing will be closed.
The second reading.
After second reading. After second reading, if we don't object tonight, then we are unable to object at second reading, even though, even though it will be changed.
The explanation also implied, if I understood right, that those that did not object but made recommendations, as I myself, are a little bit disregarded, but will all the comments be considered?
Comments will be considered.
All comments, okay, yes. It just also objects to have a second chance to come back.
Okay.
Just one more question. For the sake of transparency, will there ever have been reasons, reasons given to the property owner why they have been singled out for a zoning change? Like, this is very interesting to me and my husband, you know. And I feel it's part of the transparency. I would like, I would really like to know. Or maybe.
Would you be more specific?
Would you like me to tell you what I'm referring to?
I think, I think for your benefit, because it's more personal. You may want to deal directly with the planner.
Okay. I did try and talk to the planners at a meeting last year, and they couldn't answer my question. Basically, it would hurt me like a conscience.
Send in the question again.
Yeah, reset your ink.
Okay, we can send.
Sorry. Okay, any other comments from the group? All right, gentlemen.
I got it in my head. I gotta, I gotta clarify.
Okay.
Sir. I just, I just want to clarify. So once second reading is done, people can object, object again to that, to that second reading. Because my understanding from what you said.
No.
That this is it.
This is it.
Okay, because that is totally contrary to what I thought that people wanted.
This is it for the first objection. So if you don't get your first objection in by now, you cannot object later on down the road. You have to object now. You close the hearing, we do the edits, get the second draft. Then the people that object now can reread through it, and they can further object.
Or support.
Or support, okay. So if we get 25 objections after the second draft gets passed by council, it will then go to the municipal board.
Sorry, but if, if you don't object now and the second reading, the amendments make changes that people who originally didn't object to aren't happy with, why wouldn't they be allowed to object at that time? Like that, because, because there can be change corrected, can be changes made. But the people, I'm objecting, so I'm not, I'm not on that group. I'm just, I'm just about the process, yeah.
The process of the planning act is that you're even public hearing process, which is right now is in the time where you're able to object or to file your initial objection. Yeah, so even if the changes were made, say, after second reading, and somebody didn't like those changes, they could not submit an objection. They'd have to submit it tonight.
Thank you.
It's a process.
Yes.
I'll just read through anybody that does object.
I just, all right, I'm sorry, everybody. I know it's been a long evening. Our C E O would just like to read through to clarify whether your objections, your objections were.
So the first one I have here is Melanie Tully. You still have an objection?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The next one is Laura Jones. You object? Mary Hansen. You're an object, okay? Tom Ackersley. You're an object? Oh, boy. Karen?
You have Greg Hansen on there.
Karen.
Karen Ackersley, you're objecting. Well, so great, you, you're an object.
Miss Clara, with Miss Clara vacation.
Okay. Okay, next. Brian Blumicki.
Galacki.
Galacki.
Yes, I'll object.
You object? Glenn Lester? Greg Saunders?
No.
No?
No, not property owners.
That's the support.
Ballard, you're an object. Okay. Linda McMillan. And Jamie Dawson?
I didn't make it public here what the, I have corresponded.
Did you send an email?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't know if you sent that or, but I'll have it in my office. Is there anybody else that wishes to object?
Change, Kevin Dubay to object.
Is that what's happening? It's still good to reserve, basically to reserve.
I don't know where your names are.
They can't object a second time, my God.
Any question for council? Are you going to be here for the second reading?
I can be, if you want.
Is that normal, or?
Usually, we'll be up for the public hearing, but if there's something, if there's extra questions or something changes, then yeah.
Okay, because somebody mentioned that there's 25, 25 people oppose, then they go to a public hearing. I'm new to this, so I have no idea what that means. Right, so maybe you'd like to explain what's involved there, if it goes to the municipal board.
Okay, so there's 25 initial objections, and then there's 25 second objections received or more. The 25 is the minimum of eligible voters. Then it automatically gets referred to the Manitoba Municipal Board. So the board will review all the documents submitted, whether it's people from the public who want to submit as well because it's a separate public hearing outside of what we've held today or what you held today. And then the municipal board will schedule that hearing and fully presentation from whoever wants to speak at that public hearing. And that is after second reading, correct? Correct, yes.
So the only name I have added so far is Kevin Dubay. Is there who's next?
Leanna Shuchak.
Leanna Shuchak. Did you sign in, Leanna, or did you come late?
I came late and signed in back here.
Okay, I can sign you in up here if you're okay with that.
There's another name on the list that would appear. I can just bring the list through.
Thank you.
Can you do that, my name, Linda Nelson?
Are you chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to move back to a point which I had heard earlier, which is surprising by the process. You indicated, sorry, a point, I don't want to tell you my name, that the hearing does not need to close off tonight. It could be adjourned or it could continue on in four weeks or six weeks to prevent the reposing, et cetera. Could the council or you decide that a redraft of the bylaw, taking all, I think you heard tonight, will be circulated before the continuation of this hearing so that at the second hearing, we have a good idea and maybe can avoid the risk of, or the delays of 25 objections, which are surprising because I thought you said this hearing would technically, and I've seen that happen, and we didn't say we did that often. They come back three days, I think they get a 90 to 11 of those things, and they come back and they reread the document. At that time, we have access to the document that you have worked on the 24 hours a day to keep your deadlines. So we can then look at it again without simplifying the matter. So we don't have to rush to protect our right to object, which I think in the spirit of what's happening, and, you know, I have objections against a view of it, and in the spirit of what's happening, we want to, I'd like to see that we're going forward. Your work, with a positive step towards the bylaw.
Andre, can you, you look like you want to weigh in.
I was just going to add another point about a bylaw being referred to the municipal board. Basically, it's more of a court of law setting. The municipal board is appointed, and it removes any ability for your local counselors who represent you to make decisions on your behalf. The board can be made up of people from all over the province. Your local concerns may not have the same meaning to them, and they can pass the bylaw with what they feel deemed to be reasonable based on what's in the development plan. So that's kind of how they would weigh the process. It removes your local council from the process of finalizing the bylaw, and you can pass an order that would state that these changes have to be made. Those are the changes that are made, and the bylaw sticks. That's what, that's basically what it contains moving forward. And then there's no room for appeal after that. Is there a?
Just to underline what Andre has explained, maybe it was six, eight terms. If objections force this back to the municipal board, the final decision will be made by people not from RMDB, by strangers, by outsiders. And in that, before the municipal board, you can treat it as a hearing before court, be prepared to be assessed some costs and legal fees. So there's, there's some pretty good reasons to withdraw your objection if it's frivolous.
Sorry, thank you. Leanna.
The option here is, as stated, set your date one month or 30 days in advance. I didn't hear substantial changes, 30 days, and then look at the committee then, and then the objections to this here by law, on first reading.
Second reading.
Second, first reading.
Second reading.
So if, if you, if you do, if there, the option is not to close the hearing, to leave it open, have the changes made, re-post, what you might find is that folks see what the comments are, and then there are no objections. Because you have a number of people with this warning and objection. and then there are no objections, because you have a number of people with this warning and objection opportunity, right?
Correct.
So that's an option.
Thank you, sorry, just a minute, Linda, please, go ahead, Steve.
So I would hazard a guess, especially because with the emails, we have over 25. So if we try to close this out right now, then we're going to the board. I would just put some things into perspective.
Okay, contact?
Okay, so again, with all emails that we received, right, they were all responding with their title, objections. So we have to contact them.
We have to advise them.
There are a lot of people in this room who are concerned right now, who, when they found out that this is their one and only opportunity before third reading, they're like, I don't understand that, but before we get all the way to third reading, this is their one and only opportunity to actually object. People are suddenly now jumping up saying, I'm going to object, because otherwise I'm not going to have a chance to object between second and third. So I can just put some context in here. If we're to pass second reading, assuming that nobody was going to be objecting, we're able to get through that in between second and third, and make some amendments. So that way, we thought that we'd have another hearing and be heard again, and allow everybody to have their voice. So that way, it's just, okay, we've done all of the due diligence. What I would propose is exactly what Walter proposed, which is have it delayed. Call it for, say, a couple months from now. I know that we don't want to delay anymore, but this would be a way that we can basically follow the process that we're already going to be doing, and help to bypass this issue, because nobody wants to go to the board. We're getting really close to that, if we're not already there.
I don't think we need a couple months. Let's postpone it for 30 days.
Yeah, sure.
Go back to the drawing board, do some drafting and consultation with our consultant, and represent back to you folks.
Because in all honesty, that's what we're going to do, right? We're going to take, we're going to take considerations, we're going to take the, what people were saying, we're going to listen, we're going to go back, look at it, tweak it, and then propose it back to everybody, make it public. So in that way, we could know that everybody was okay with this. But people are jumping up a bit now, justifying it so, because this is their one and only opportunity to say no. It had any power.
They're only objecting to continue their ability to debate that in future. They're not, it's not a true hard no at this point.
But the issue, though, is that if you just delay it, they shouldn't really change their opinion, because they have an opportunity to change that after the second reading.
They really will change.
That's why people are jumping up now, because they don't.
I think we have to listen to what went on. We have to go through the transcripts. We have to have some discussions with our platters and put some amendments on the table. Possibly, possibly, yes. Or at the very least, provide some clarity on some issues. So let's set a date for 30 days from today, and go forward.
Andre, does that make sense? Ellen, yes. So I'm not, just adjourned? Look at your calendars, gentlemen.
How about Halloween night, October 31st?
Who's bringing the candy?
So if you're going to make edits to the bylaw, and we don't have a second reading, we just continue this public hearing?
Yeah.
How can it be changed without a resolution by council or government?
We still make changes, it's still in its draft form right now.
And so you make the changes, we send it out, and then we have another, this continued hearing with that new bylaw?
Yeah, it's sort of a draft of second reading.
I know, but it was never given a.
A draft of second reading.
It'll be the second draft after first reading.
Wow, I like that better.
I just, I really ask people, if you object, that you know what you're objecting to. That's all. Council's exhausted.
And what?
I'm exhausted. This has been a two-year process. There's been open houses, there's been emails, letters, postings, everything on the website. If you're going to object, please know what you're objecting to. That's all. And have a solution provided. Otherwise, it's just chasing tail. Then we go on for it.
This is a really quick question, and sorry, I haven't had the time to really look into this, but is the new proposal, all this is about, is it online?
Yes, yes, yes. If you go onto our webpage, the homepage, it's under local documents.
And you said there was never a bylaw before regarding zoning, like a zoning?
Yes, there was. It was from the 1969 planning scheme and the 2004 consolidated amendments.
Is that also online?
I'm not, I don't know. It's an old bylaw?
I mean, it's. It should, of course, I need to know what I'm doing here. I need to compare what was, what you want to do. I don't actually know how many people are being changed with their property, or if that's only us, I have no idea, no? So I need to know.
Well, I. I would just like to say that council has been immersed in this for, myself, seven years. Most members on this council, seven years. To say that we're rushing it through, it is a little hard for me to accept. To say that we're only doing it in the fall, when everybody's away, is a little hard for me to accept. It's been online. We've had open houses. We've had consultations with a variety of groups and with individuals. Our planner was answering emails until 11:30 last night. I think, I think we have made significant efforts in public consultation. I fear that if we adjourn this, and it sounds like we will, what's going to stop the next draft from even a different set of objections? We are trying to get this right. We have worked so hard to try to get this right. I'm almost done.
But even tonight, we learned about clarification on the process. I think we all have a better understanding of what the rules are.
Yes, thank you for that.
Let's buy ourselves 30 days, work hard on listening and studying, and perhaps committing.
Perhaps, yes. All right, so Andre, et cetera, and not et cetera, pardon me, Andre, Ellen, and council, long. Be it resolved the October 3 public hearing for zoning bylaws 1651, be adjourned, and be continued at a later date as determined by council. I do not want to end this meeting without that later date on the table.
October 30th, day before Halloween. It's a Wednesday.
Is all of council available on October 30th?
Congratulations, yes. One of my favorite days.
31st is Halloween.
Oh, I know, but I'll be.
No costumes allowed.
Long, does that work for you? All right, so gentlemen.
To be continued 30th of October?
To be continued on the 30th of October. May I have a mover? Same venue?
Same time?
Same time, same place? Erwin moved it, Graham second. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. It has been interesting. It has been informative, and I do appreciate your comments.
What's your comments?
We are adjourned.